Welcome to Seattle Public Schools Board of Directors Legislative Meeting on May 9, 2018, and the fact that you're inside on this glorious day, we appreciate immensely. We're going to have roll call here in a moment, and Director Pinkham is on his way. Welcome to Seattle traffic. Ms. Ramirez, the roll call, please.
Director Burke.
Here.
Director DeWolff.
Here.
Director Geary.
Here.
Director Mack.
Here.
Director Patu.
Here.
Director Harris.
Here. Can we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands foundation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Turn the meeting over to Superintendent Dr. Larry Nyland for the superintendent's recognition.
Thank you. Before we begin the recognition portion of the meeting, I'd like to acknowledge the tragic shooting that occurred last night at West Seattle Stadium. It's with sadness that I share the news about a shooting at the Seattle Parks and Rec Track Meet in West Seattle last night. The victim, who passed away, is a parent, family member of SBS students and staff, and it impacts many families and students in our communities. Although it was not an SBS event, many of the students participating in the track meet are SBS students and families, including our staff. We did have counseling support for students and families in the affected schools today. Recognizations, as we do often at our board meetings, we like to recognize our premier partners, and very much appreciate the broad community support we have for the work of our schools and the important impact that our premier partners have in the lives of our students in terms of making all of our students feel welcome and giving them that connection that they need. Tonight, we want to recognize the Vietnamese Friendship Association. They provide awesome work for us in connecting with 300 immigrant and refugee families, primarily at the Seattle World School but throughout the district. I'd like to introduce Dr. Konse Pedrosa, who will tell us a little bit more about the good work that the Vietnamese Friendship Association does in partnership with Seattle Public Schools.
Thank you, Dr. Nyland. I just want to share that I think the Vietnamese Friendship Association embodies organization, a community-based organization, that actually has the values of our policy, our Equity Policy Zero Zero Three Zero, as a through line in their work. I also believe in terms of the collaboration and coherence model that they do, that they come alongside and want to learn and work along schools. They're data-focused, they're focused on equity, racial equity, working with especially the realms of the impacts of all the kids in our system, but most particularly refugees and immigrants and the students that they serve. And what I really appreciated about them is they do their work based on research, based on research related to data, related to, they do their research around attendance, about what does it mean to be in after-school programming, and they come alongside schools to do that work with them. So I'm just very honored to be here to pass this on to James Hong, who's the Executive Director from Vietnamese Friendship Association. I've known James a long time, and I'm really excited that this organization is being recognized.
Hi, good afternoon. Thank you, Dr. Nyland, and Konse, and our school board, for this recognition and this honor. So on behalf of the Vietnamese Friendship Association, I'm humbled to be here today. This year marks VFA's 40th anniversary, and we were founded in the 1970s to support the resettlement needs of refugees from the Vietnam War. And as the Vietnamese community grew, so did we. Today, we celebrate by reflecting on our roots, and we're excited about the future. We are very proud to partner with Seattle Public Schools and the Seattle World School to serve refugee and immigrant youth, families, and communities. It's an especially exciting time for us at VFA to witness these communities organize and demonstrate their collective strengths in the face of an increasingly hostile and violent political climate. At a time in our history when refugees and immigrants are being shut down, many are making their voices heard, and I think in a moment we'll see video highlighting stories from some of the youth that we serve. And I think many of you know and agree that when youth feel safe and have respect and are dignified in their livelihoods, they have a lot of wisdom to share, and we can learn a lot from them. I think we as leaders and organizations and as institutions who are in positions of power still have a lot of room to grow and learn in our own leadership so that we can continue to ensure that refugees and immigrants are not only a part of the conversation but are also a part of the decision-making process at all levels. So VFA is excited to continue our partnership, hopefully for another 40 years, and continue our work advancing racial equity and social justice. And honestly, if we can get these goals achieved sooner, that would be fantastic. So thank you, and I think there's going to be a video very shortly. Thank you.
I like Seattle World School so much because in this school you have different students in different languages.
You can learn English, origami, photography, homework help, and running club.
Este programa es un programa que se hace en los aulas donde los estudiantes de la escuela vienen aquí y nos ayudan con nuestras tareas, con nuestro inglés, con nuestra cualquiera asignatura, y nos ayudan también programas de AEC en las computadoras.
Sometimes if you don't have homework, they leave a little time to play a game, and after you can do Excel or something like that.
I like after-school class because some college students, they are helping me. I like it because English is hard for me to speak and to write, to read. That's why I stay after-school, and they are helping me.
Que se pasan buen tiempo aquí, que deberían aprovechar porque muchas veces no tenemos nada que hacer en nuestras casas y serían buenos venir aquí a los aulas, conocer buenas personas, nuevas personas, personas de otras escuelas que nos podían dar consejos de que podríamos ser, cuál podría ser nuestro próximo paso.
I like art class because I like mystery works so much, and I like the students because I have different students in different languages. I like that.
I just come to here because it's so boring in my home, and maybe they can do the same thing, and you can learn too, and you don't have more homework to do at home, just here.
Lo más importante es que te quieren como una familia, no importa de dónde venga o quién eres, ellos no miran eso, y te tratan bastante bien, y son personas muy bonitas.
I'd like to invite the board down, and we've got a plaque to present to the Vietnamese Friendship Association, and then I guess we do have double duty tonight, so we'll have the board come back up here, and then we'll go down for our next recognition after that. All right, we have another recognition tonight, excited about. Seattle Chongqing Sister City Partnership has been underway for 35 years, and this is the eighth anniversary of the Confucius Institute of Washington, partnership that we have enjoyed for many, many, many years. And I will want to take this opportunity to thank Wen Chu Wang for her great work over the last four years. They were just explaining in very great detail all of the ins and outs that had to go through to get a couple of exchanges done this spring about teachers swapping positions and doing whatever it takes to make sure that we can continue to have students and teachers from China come here, and students and teachers from here go to China and build that Chinese language appreciation as well as the cultural appreciation as well, along with that international global perspective. So I would like to invite Michelle Aoki to come and tell us a little bit more about the partnership and give us an opportunity to meet some of the representatives that we have here with us tonight.
Thank you so much. It's a great honor to be here. I'm Michelle Ansi Aoki, International Education Administrator. So I have the great pleasure of working with the VFA as well, all the cultures and languages of our district. But in particular, I've been involved with the Confucius Institute of the State of Washington, and the sister-city relationship with Chongqing has been key to our being able to establish such a strong Confucius Institute. And as I pointed out in the program there, this last year in China, among thousands of delegates from all over the world, our partner in Chongqing, Chongqing Municipal Education Commission, which is like a school district except that it's a little larger place than the city of Seattle, received the Partner of the Year Award recognition. So that Partner Awards don't happen one-sided. It means that we really were a good partner here in Seattle to them as well. So what I wanted to highlight really here is how much our students have benefited in Seattle from the visiting teachers that have come from Chongqing and some other areas of China as well. Right now, we have six, seven of our teachers, I guess, here that are in a variety of schools, from Dearborn Park, excuse me, not Dearborn Park this year, but Beacon Hill, Mercer, Denny, Chief Self, and Pathfinder KH. Thank you very much. And as Superintendent Nyland mentioned, Wen Chu Wang has been our Chinese director from China, provided to us through a visa through the University of Washington as our partner institution for the last four years. So she'll be leaving this summer, so we're really happy to have a moment just to thank her for her tireless work to serve our students and our teachers in Seattle. And so the other thing I just want to mention is that this is coinciding, again as Superintendent Nyland mentioned, with the 35th anniversary of our sister-city relationship. I think what the sister cities really point out is that other countries are prepared to make long-term commitments to relationships with our country, and I hope that our country will reach the place where we understand what a long-term commitment means. So at this moment, is this a good time to have people come forward?
Sure.
Okay, so I would invite all of our teachers. We also have Stefan Blandford, who is here tonight as a parent who has enjoyed our Mandarin Dual Language Immersion programs and traveled to Chongqing with his daughter too. And we have Scott Heinlein, President of the Chongqing Sister City Association. Do you want me to say a quick word, Scott, while we kind of line up here for a picture?
And for those of...
We also have families, including Nat Bowman, who is one of our original students in Mandarin Dual Language Immersion, and recently won the Chinese Bridge Competition in Washington, and will be going to San Francisco this weekend to compete nationally.
And for those folks that are unaware, and I can't believe there are very many, Stefan Blandford is alumna of this Board of Directors and serves with distinction. Good to see you back here.
Thank you.
So would you like us to line up with the board members? Is that what happens next?
Do you want to make some remarks before we...
Oh, just thank you for allowing me to come here, first of all. Yeah, it is our 35th anniversary coming up. The sister cities had a long and well-established relationship with Seattle Public Schools. We have a number of resources, we believe, that are at our disposal to leverage even more cooperation with Chongqing. So we look forward to the opportunity to do just that.
And without further ado, the Stevens Elementary School Choir, come on up. Could you tell us a little bit about yourself and your program, and then we'll hand the mic to each of our extraordinarily talented singers to introduce themselves so that moms and dads, uncles, aunts, grandparents, and guardians can see them on video for posterity's sake.
Thank you, yes. We have a great music program at Stevens. We have two music teachers. Amy Carroll, who is a district teacher. I am a resident artist funded by our wonderful PTA, and I run Choir Five. I help produce our holiday event, the Pancake Breakfast, and our multicultural night, and I do selected curriculum-based musical units for third, fourth, and fifth grade as the year goes on. And this is our star group. They are just so fantastic. I can't tell you how dedicated, how committed, and how easy to work with this group of kids is. And we're not at full force here today. We're typically about 34 kids, so we're about 10 short. Some kids couldn't make it. And next week, we're going to go meet the Seattle University Chamber Choir, and we exchange songs with them. It's our other exciting field trip every year. And let's meet these guys.
And don't stop, you guys. Do not stop your music education. Keep it going next year and beyond. Introduce yourself and Pastor Graham.
Hi, I'm Drew Davies.
Hi, my name is Sophia Judd.
Hi, my name is Zee.
Without question, that might be the best part of being a board member is to see all these extraordinary performances. And they give you inspiration. Now turn the meeting over to Superintendent Dr. Larry Nyland for his comments. Thank you.
All right. Wow, that was awesome. Lots of celebrations this week and this month. It's Teacher Appreciation Week. And as you hear me say often, the highlight of my time is spending time in classrooms. All right. We have 3,385 educators, 1,179 substitute teachers. And they do awesome work. We, many of us had the opportunity to be at the Alliance for Education Lunch today. And it was nice to have them give a shout out to our educators being third in the nation for urban districts in terms of year-over-year growth for students. And that's a tribute to our educators throughout the district. So much appreciated. National School Nurse Day. And a lot of impressive statistics there. And as President Harris often mentions, the state generously funds us at nine nurses for 53,000 students. Fortunately, Seattle is able to do better than that. We have about 50 FTE nurses on staff. And then the city supports us. And we still don't have enough. So we greatly appreciate the work that our healthcare professionals provide for us. It's also Asian Pacific American Heritage Month, celebrating Asians and Pacific Islanders in the U.S. It's Digital Inclusion Week, recognizing that we have a digital divide. And some of our communities are working to make sure that we have increased equity and access to digital resources. It's also National Bike to School Month. And our employees here at the John Stanford Center had a coffee and goodies event out today, celebrating the number of employees here in this building that ride their bicycle to work. And tomorrow night, in this room, we'll be celebrating Seattle Schools Scholarship Fund Annual Award Ceremony. Appreciate board members' participation in that event. It's always special to have the Seattle School Retirees Association and the Seattle Schools Scholarship Fund recognize two students from each of our high schools and to hear just a little bit of the incredible stories that each of them have. I'll be brief on the rest of my comments. Our three strategic planning goals are excellence and equity, systems improvement, and engagement. And I'll comment just briefly on each one of those. Under the excellence and equity portion, thank you to the school board. Continue to have a lot of meetings, in addition to formal award meetings. Had work sessions last week in terms of enrollment and capacity. And then a discussion of the SMART goals for this coming year. So lots of good discussions have been underway already and more discussions to come. Board at this point seems to be zeroing in on continuation of the excellence and the equity and the engagement goals. And then adding a goal with regard to high schools for the 21st century. Still some discussion about what that goal might be called. And and the 24 credits and how we continue to give more opportunities to our students to have them be, as our strategic plan says, college, career, and life-ready. Under Ethnic Studies, I think we have some on the signup list tonight to talk about Ethnic Studies. And there is at the back table a memo, an update with regard to where we are with our Ethnic Studies work. And I'll just comment briefly that we have had a group of 25 educators on our Ethnic Studies Work Group. They've been working with us to develop an Ethnic Studies curriculum. And then we've had approximately 40 teachers who have been piloting the draft Ethnic Studies core content that were, that was developed by that group. So thank you to the board for providing the funding for that as part of our SMART Goals Funding. And thank you to the city who also contributed some funding to that. And I said I was only going to mention one, but there's one more here. So Arts-Focused Culturally Responsive Teaching is another one of our efforts that's underway that has a group of teachers saying how they can use arts to provide more culturally responsive opportunities for our students. Under Improving Systems, we have had a lot of concern generated with regard to transportation and our delayed transportation in, in too many cases. So first student is having difficulty getting sufficient drivers. And that means that we've had to double up on some of the routes. So we continue to work with them. They will be flying in some drivers from out of state to help with that, probably next week. And meanwhile, we're continuing to do what we can to try to get routes doubled up and get kids to school. And then interesting topic here that I won't do justice to, trying to figure out how to digitize our archives and go from, I think it says 35 boxes of paper that we generate just from student records each year. And so trying to figure out how to digitize that and archive it more efficiently. And then the third goal is with regard to community engagement. We've recently completed five regional meetings with regard to capital construction requests coming up for February of 2019. We'll be going out to some of our communities of color here in the next few weeks. And then there'll be more opportunities for engagement as the board goes through a process of deciding what will go on the ballot in February. Lots of good news across the district. The first one talks about President Obama's mother, who has some connection with Mercer Island High School and a partnership with Rainier Beach. So two of our students from Rainier Beach have received Stanley and Dunham Scholarships for college, $5,000 each. So congratulations to them. The Garfield Chess Team took 12th in the U.S. Awesome for them. The Duke Ellington Festival every year. Seattle is always well-represented. I think there's about a dozen, maybe 15, schools that are invited from across the country. Roosevelt and Ballard have been invited this year. And two, like say, of about a dozen chosen out of 109 schools that were vying for that honor. Governor Inslee came and spent some time with Concord students. Fourth and fifth grade students were with Governor Jay Inslee at the dedication ceremony for the new Cimar Museum of Chicano-Latino Culture. And the governor tweeted about the students at Concord, saying that was the best part of his visit. Narimor Art Exhibit is huge every year. We appreciate the partnership with the Seattle Arts Museum. They give a showcase for 200 of our artists to have their work showcased there. And the awards were given on Friday. But I believe that they're on exhibit there for a while. And so it's great to see the talent that our young people have. And you see the posters around. I think the Seattle Center School every year does several posters advertising the event. So there's four of different versions of those that are scattered around the district, encouraging people to come see the work of our students. Ignite is Inspiring Girls Now in Technology Evolution. And they have honored two of our teachers for the work that they've done. Michelle Amato at Broadview Thompson and Julie Gotti at Franklin High School were recognized. One of our third graders, Corinne Manning. I don't think I can say this. The Google Doodle, I think that's the thing that comes up on our screen. She's in line for competing well and moving on toward having hers included in that National Doodle for Google Contest. So budding artist there. Maybe she'll get a, an audition with Google. Mr. Zetterberg's class at Thurgood Marshall was recognized for participating in Facing Difference Challenge. Our Nutrition Services held a culinary summit here. Gee, I've been partyed at that before. I missed out on food. They came here on a field trip and participated with us here. And then finally, congratulations to Zen Williams of Chief South International High School for her first-place win with Voice Through My Hands at this year's seventh district congressional arts competition. So lots of good things underway. And again, looking forward to the scholarship recognitions tomorrow night here in this room. Thank you.
Thank you. We have reached the point of the agenda where if board directors have committee reports, a few minutes to tell us what we're up to and when your next meeting is and what is a hot topic. Who would like to go first? Director Mack, Chair of Operations.
Good evening. We had a great work session on May 1 about enrollment and capacity for next year. And the year after that, though, we ran out of time to actually get into the details on the 2019-20 school year. But great conversation about our challenges for next year. And as I understand it, staff is going to be getting back to us on some of the questions around Robert Eagle Staff and portables and possibilities of moving waitlists at the Audit and Finance Committee meeting, which is next Monday. So the staff is working on looking at options there. And I want to let you know that's happening. For Operations, we have our meeting tomorrow and an incredibly full agenda to include nine various capital project board actions, discussion about the natural resource conservation procedure. We're going to have a report on our rental activities, facilities, activities and rental rates. And we've also added something to the agenda that you can find online where we list all of the upcoming meetings. And there's a lot of them around BECS and other district-sponsored meetings that are related to operations. And on this Friday, the BECS BTA Oversight Committee meeting is meeting. And I think that's about it. So looking forward to a busy conversation tomorrow.
Thanks very much. Who else would like to report out? Director Pinkham, Chair of Audit and Finance.
Thank you, Director Harris. We had our April meeting before our last meeting. So I just have an update now for our meeting coming up on Monday. Actually, Eden kind of touched on it, that we will be looking at Eagle Staff and how things are impacted, not only for that site, but other sites, as we're looking to add portables and the financial costs and what maybe we can do differently. Or just try to see what other ideas we can come up with to help lower the costs and the number of portables that we're putting on our sites. Looking at our agenda for this coming Monday, definitely a lot of bars. That's one thing I kind of missed. Haven't been able to say yes. That was heard by Audit and Finance and we recommended it for. So it looks like I'll be doing that quite a bit in the next few budget meetings or board meetings. Really nothing more to report than other what I reported at the last board meeting. But again, we will be meeting Monday, May 14 from 4:30 to 6:30. If you're interested, please attend.
Director Burke, Chair of Curriculum and Instruction.
Curriculum Instruction, next meeting is Tuesday, May 15, 4:30 PM. And we have two board action reports up for discussion and potential action. One of them is the Student Rights and Responsibilities Handbook. And one is the annual approval of our Highly Capable Annual Plan, which, you know, I think has typically been a great conversation item at those committee meetings. We're working on being introduced to several policy things. We're moving forward the program evaluation and assessment work with an accompanying superintendent procedure. That's actually not expected to come out of committee, but I think it's going to be developed a little bit further. We're going to touch on the, the early stages of policies 2021 through 2024, which relate to electronic learning. And I know that's a topic that's been a, a point for the board for quite some time. That work will be referring pretty carefully or closely with our Information Technology Advisory Committee that I believe the application window for that closes tomorrow. Thank you for that. So we'll be doing final selection or selection of folks for that committee within the next one to two weeks. And we have some special attention items. We're going to be talking a little bit about civics as a component of, of our high school or our K-12 social studies. And an update on the advanced learning work. And an update on Ethnic Studies. And also some of the things that are coming forward on the Naviance that was approved by the board. Some of the details about how that's being worked through in terms of opt-out. So it's going to be a really, as always, interesting and lively discussion. Hope folks can attend.
Thank you. Any other directors would like to report out? Seeing none. At this point, I'd like to introduce our students that are here at the dais to my left. Gian Rosario and Essence Roberson. Gian is a senior at Rainier Beach High School who is responsible for organizing social justice equity. equity, a much-needed renovation for Rainier Beach High School. We've been hearing from several extraordinary speakers as to the need for Rainier Beach High School and its placement on Bex Five. He's very passionate about Rainier Beach community generally and will continue these efforts after graduation. And he will be attending University of Washington in Seattle, majoring in engineering and poli-sci. Go Dogs! Essence, senior at Rainier Beach High School, has joined the social justice efforts with Gian and recruited a slew of students to fight the good fight. Oh, I love whoever wrote this. Thank you, Nate. She's an art major and planning on attending Cornish Institute. The floor is yours. Tell us about yourselves, your schools, your hopes, your aspirations, what you like and what you don't like. And pick up the microphone and hold it closely so that...
Sorry. Do you, any specific, like this order of questions you want us to answer first?
How about who, what, how, come, and where you're going?
Okay, so you go first.
Well, I'm going to Cornish because my teacher, Mr. Stephen Miller, recommended it to me. Oh, he recommended the school to me because he thought it was a good fit for me, and he said, you should always research your teachers and who you're studying with and make sure you like them, because if you don't like the school, then you shouldn't just go there.
Tell us about your art teacher at Rainier Beach High School.
Well, for, I believe, two to three years, we had Ms. Hancock. She was wonderful. She just, she's just a wonderful person. She made sure that what we wanted, we were on track to get. And now we have Ms. Morelli, who is also a great teacher, and she recommended Cornish as well. I'm not sure if they went there, but they very hadn't been about it.
And why is art important to a high school student?
Well, I'm not sure about anyone else, but for me, I've been, I like all forms of art. I find beauty in everything and everyone. Art is just a way for me to express myself. Like, I don't often show like anger or anything, so I'll show it like in a sketch or something. I don't know, art is just everything to me.
Thank you. Gian, can you tell us why engineering, why the University of Washington in Seattle? What did you like best about attending Rainier Beach and why the community is so important to you?
So, well, I was recommended by my counselors to go to the University of Washington, and I was looking at the engineering program, and I wasn't actually like much interested in engineering until, I was more interested in political science, but I decided to do engineering instead after we did an internship at Basetti Architect last summer. And so that's where I had like, kind of like a mentor, his name's James, and he kind of told me about like, you know, all the things that we could do with engineering. And so with the, you know, with us trying to push the renovation, I was like, why, like, why not just do engineering? So I decided to do that. And then so, sorry, what was the other question?
Why is your Rainier Beach community so important to you?
I mean, not just because I live, not just because I live there. I think it's, I feel like it's just, it's different from other school experiences that I've had. Going from Cleveland to Rainier Beach is, it's just, I can't say, I don't know what it is at Rainier Beach, but there's something there that's just, makes me keep wanting to come back every time, like even after graduation. I'll be there after graduation. Yeah.
Thank you, guys, very much. I want to round with applause. More? Please, continue.
Oh, we can, we can share, yeah. Sorry, yeah. So I haven't really had the opportunity to give a shout out and thank you to Mr. Richard Best and Gretchen D. Decker. So they helped out on our day of service, where we did cleaning around the school, did partial improvements and renovations at our PAC lobbies. Wanted to say thank you to them.
We also want to give a shout out to all of our counselors, Ms. Tran, Bethia, Savali, for ensuring that our seniors at Rainier Beach High School graduate. And I also like to thank Mr. Pierce, who is, who has been stressing as much as we have during IB exams or basically the whole school year, making sure that we give our all and our assignments are completed and like to the best of their abilities.
And also would like to take a moment to appreciate the entire Rainier Beach High School staff for the outstanding job they do every day at school. And we also wanted to invite the school board to some events that we're having in the later half of the year.
Yeah, so we have multicultural night tomorrow, I believe at seven, correct? If you, if you guys want to stop by, you can. And on June seventh, at seven P.M., we have our yearly fashion show that we will both be in. Ha ha! So we invite you to that as well.
Thanks very much, and thanks for the assist, Director DeWolf. Much appreciate. Okay. We still have a little time for board comments, but let's get the consent agenda out of the way presently, if we might. May I have a motion for the consent agenda, please?
I move approval of the consent agenda.
I second the motion.
Approval of the consent agenda has been moved and seconded. Do directors have any items that they would like to remove from the consent agenda? Director Mack? Yes, ma'am.
I noticed that there is some public comment around something that's on the consent agenda, and I recall we had this conversation about the order of the consent agenda coming before public comment, and I don't remember what we resolved around...
Can you link it up to the public comment topic?
Well, I, public testimony number seven just says personnel report, and I don't know what, it doesn't say anything more than that, but that's in the consent agenda. So if we adopt it, we can't...
I would entertain a motion to delay this until after public testimony. Do I have such a motion?
This item or this entire action?
This entire action until after public testimony.
Motion to adjust the agenda, to move the consent agenda to follow public testimony.
Thank you.
I second the motion.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Okay. Now we have reached board comments. Who would like to go first? We have fifteen minutes before public testimony starts. Don't all yell at once. Director Burke, thank you.
Okay, I'll keep it short. I want to also extend thanks to, you know, for our recognitions, James Hahn and Vietnamese Friendship Association, and happy fortieth anniversary. That's super exciting, and I know that that work has personally benefited my family, so I really appreciate that. The, there's a point in Superintendent Nylund's comments about Teacher Appreciation Week that said, thank a teacher who had an impact on your life. So I just want, some of you, maybe all of you have heard this story, so apologize if it's a repeat, but when I was attending Ballard High School, when we didn't have to have quite as many credits and there was more opportunity and flexibility, I took metal shop twice with Mr. Taylor and wood shop twice with Mr. Bogota. And now I do a lot of work on my house and actually got a feature article in this old house. And, and the job that I work now, the company that I run, I started as a student because I knew how to run a vertical mill. So I say I owe my career to Mr. Taylor and I owe my hobby to Mr. Bogota.
Ten percent back.
And you're getting it as we speak. I want to thank the team that's been doing the work on ethnic studies. We've been getting regular reports on the CNI Committee, and I know it's an area of passion for the community, and I know it's something that there's a sense of urgency behind. And I really want to thank the people that are both creating the sense of urgency and that are working their tushes off to fulfill. I've, honestly, I've never seen the district jump so fast in doing a body of work and also trying to do it with fidelity and doing it well. You know, the folks that are creating and curating the materials and putting it out into schools to pilot and doing it, you know, incrementally, but as fast as, as they, they feel like they can actually get things into service. I'm really looking forward to hearing feedback from some of those pilots and understanding how we can take it more to scale. One other thing, I had a community meeting last weekend, and I just wanted to share a couple of the topics. The Eagle Staff Lipton Springs Capacity Challenge came up again with the community interests, and I just wanted to share with the board and also with the community that there are, staff is looking at different options and scenarios to try to understand what that looks like. And we'll have a more, more public-facing, you know, actually some messaging, some scenarios, certainly before the, the summer break, and I'll be doing some more outreach for the folks that I'm at the schools to try to make sure that we're capturing their input. I also heard from, from some librarians again, and a reminder about sustainable funding model to try to put librarians into every elementary school and the challenges of elementary schools that don't have the numbers, that they don't get a 1.0 allocation, they get a .5, and it's not a .6 or a .7, it's either a 1.0 or a .5. So that, that desecritization of either get half or whole really makes an impact on, on some of these libraries. I had some folks who were inquiring or encouraging more city collaboration on properties and capacity work, and so I just was able to reassure them about the great work that is happening. And it's, I'd say it's, it's completely a new chapter. And then I also had a community concern around language immersion work and how we do that across all of our different language immersion sites in a way that has, is in alignment with our equity principles, but it's also something that we can sustain the funding on and that we commit to it as a district and build it into our model so that it's not something that requires supplemental funding, that we design a model that can be funded and then we actually fund it. So I, I appreciate that concern as well and look forward to more conversations around that. I will stop there. I do not have another meeting scheduled yet, but as soon as I do, I will get that posted and may have a couple more comments after public comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Who would like to go next? Director Pinkham, thank you.
Katseya Tasskalaut. Thank you, Director Burke, for going first, so it kind of set me up, hey, what can I share? So my last community meeting, kind of lonesome, had three people show up, but the first person showed up because there were concerns about curriculum at Broadview Thompson. They were saying, hey, I'm looking at going to, signing my kids up for open enrollment. I looked at Hazel Wolf saw what they had in our assignment school, Broadview Thompson, there is definitely a difference between the curriculum available between the two. And so she didn't get the choice assignment for Hazel for the family, so she was wondering, well, what can we do to help equalize the curriculum at the different schools? Yes, that's a new school, but other schools, if they still have the older curriculum, how can we get those there? And I said, well, be aware that we are, got a new adoption, so hopefully some, our new curriculum will be getting out there to those schools that are in need of an update. So that was one of the concerns that was shared. And the other one was the Robert Eagle Staff, with the school capacity about, yes, we're over capacity right now, we're already looking at putting up portables on the site on the school that's only been open for one year, so what can we do to help alleviate that? And they were in favor of not putting up portables on the site. So just sharing that as one of the concerns. I also want to thank our speakers today, Gian and Essence. Gian, I don't know if you know, I work at the University of Washington for the College of Engineering, so hopefully I'll be seeing you around a bit. So if you've got any questions, you can say, hey, I was on the board up there with you, remember? And we'll get you taken care of. And Essence, best of luck at Cornish. My daughter also is an art enthusiast, so I know, express yourself through that and other media besides math or science, and it still is a talent, and congratulations on your talent. Thank you. Just want to acknowledge you on the Chongqing, thirty-five years anniversary for that, the Stevens Choir Five, thank you for the songs. I actually saw our board members kind of dancing in their seats, it was nice to see. Teacher Appreciation Week, yes, for me thinking about, to a teacher that really influenced me, I can actually go back to seventh grade mathematics, where I was in a math class and I was in one of the lower level math classes, it was a kind of, okay, you're on this track and you're on that track. But the upper division math teacher, or the teacher taught the different levels, and the teacher saw something in me, and he said, Scott, I'm going to pull you up and put you in another math class with these other students. And he was also a teacher that always could make the students laugh. I remember things he'd used to do, sit up at the overhead projectors. I know students, what's an overhead projector? And he'd try to plug it in by throwing the plug at the plugin. He said, one of these days, he's going to make it. So I don't know if he ever made it, he didn't make it while I was there, but he showed confidence in me or saw something in me that, hey, here's a student that was probably put on the wrong track, but I see something else, you know, I appreciate that. His name was Mr. Gilman, so I'm sure he's no longer with us, but I know his family's out there as well. So he's the one that inspired me, and eventually I went on and graduated with a math degree from the University of Washington. So without his belief in me, I probably wouldn't be where I am today as far as degree-wise. I also want to know that I am looking at introducing a future bar about reestablishing Indian Heritage High School. It's a need that I, kind of got me on the board here in the first place, and for me, I see it as one way to really bring back our community into our education. I had a visitor at the University of Washington, Dr. Kamu Bob, as part of our Men of Color and Engineering Series, and he talked about that, how unfortunate our education is moving away from the needs of the community. Our education seems to be in a little more favor of the needs of industry. Yes, it helps if we tie in the socioeconomic development that will help with, yes, let's go into industry, get those good jobs, good paying jobs, but if we don't bring along the community with it, we're losing sight. And our community then gets lost in as we're pushing, yes, let's go career-ready, but let's not leave behind our community. And I think that's something a native-focused school can really emphasize. This is a school that's going to focus on the community and do what's best for the community, because that's what education is designed to do, to make our communities better. And I'll save my, more comments for later, but Katseya.
Does someone want to go really quickly, or shall we take a stretch break until public testimony starts at five thirty? I see stretch break. Head, shoulders, knees and toes. Thank you.